We are currently in Revelation 19. We are making our way through, we have made our way through the fourfold Hallelujah, which everybody knows the meaning of.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. So, and we are beginning, we are kicking off here with verse 7, "The Marriage of the Lamb." So, we, this is peak good stuff, right here. We have trudged through so much of the evil and plagues and judgments and everything else, and here we have made it to this, which will be like a brief reprieve as we get into a few other things. But, let's start with a word of prayer, and we will start off with verse 7. Father, we thank you for another time to come together as your people to read your word, to read over a vision that you've given to your servant John 2,000 years ago, that we can glean from, that we can be transformed by today. I pray that as we are reading the contents of this section, that you would inspire us, that you would deepen the joy and the hope that we have in you. No matter what is going on in the world around us, that Father, that your Spirit will recall these words over and over again, every single day, that this is the hope that we have, this is what we have to look forward to. And I pray that that meditation will lead us to live differently moment by moment, to be fully present, to be fully involved, ready to minister in the name of Jesus Christ. We thank you for this time. We pray for your blessing, just as the blessing on the reading of this word, that Father, you would bless each and every one of us in this time. We pray this for your glory, in Jesus's name, amen. All right, so, let me read 7 through 10, and then we'll come back and just kind of unpack each of these. But yes, we wrapped up the fourfold Hallelujahs last time, and talked about a few of the issues within that, because there is praising the Lord for destruction and judgment and all kinds of stuff. And so, but here we are, verse 7, "Let us rejoice and be glad and give the glory to him, for the marriage of the Lamb has come and his bride has made herself ready. It was given to her to clothe herself in fine linen, bright and clean; for the fine linen is the righteous acts of the saints. Then he said to me, 'Write: blessed are those who were invited to the marriage supper of the Lamb.' And he said to me, 'These are true words of God.' Then I fell at his feet to worship him; but he said to me, 'Do not do that; I am a fellow servant of yours and your brethren, who hold the testimony of Jesus. Worship God; for the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy.'" Oh boy. All right, so verse 7. "The heavenly multitude continues its song of praise with the exhortation, 'Let us rejoice and be glad.'" The only other place in the New Testament where these two verbs are used together is Matthew 5:12, where the cause for rejoicing is given, as the greatness of the heavenly reward awaiting those who are reviled and persecuted for the cause of Christ. So that reward is now pictured as a great wedding feast, in which the Lamb and his bride celebrate their union. Let's go to Matthew 5:12. You know what, knowing what's coming, let's go ahead and start at verse 3. Of course, right? "Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven; blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted; blessed are the gentle, for they shall inherit the earth; blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be satisfied." Is everybody else hearing this through the lens of Revelation? Really takes a different shape. "Blessed are the merciful, for they shall receive mercy; blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God; blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God; blessed are those who have been persecuted for the sake of righteousness, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are you when people insult you and persecute you and falsely say all kinds of evil against you because of me. Rejoice and be glad, for your reward in heaven is great, for in the same way they persecuted the prophets who were before you." Wow.
How'd you get the sermon to tie in with this today?
You know what? I was camping, I haven't even heard the sermon today, so.
I hope you're busy.
Don't worry, it's on my list, so it's, I'm gonna catch it on the way home. But, no, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard the message today, so there you go. If I, as I talk and I see a bunch of nuns, I'll be like, oh, okay, all right.
What did you just talk about?
Yep. So rejoice and be glad, those are the two verbs, and the only other place that we actually have those mentioned together. So the metaphor of marriage as expressing the relationship between God and his people has its roots in the prophetic literature of the Old Testament. To Israel God said, "I will betroth you to me forever," Hosea, chapter 2, verse 19. Anybody else cringe when you hear the word Hosea? No, okay. "Israel is, Israel in exile is comforted by the remembrance that the Lord of Host is her husband and will bring her back," Isaiah, chapter 54, verses 5 through 7. This same symbolism runs throughout the New Testament. Matthew, chapter 22, verse 2 and following compares the kingdom of heaven to a king who gave a marriage feast for his son. Let's go there, Matthew, chapter 22. See what happens when the king tells a story about a marriage feast. Jesus spoke to them again in parable, saying, "The kingdom of heaven may be compared to a king who gave a wedding feast for his son. And he sent out his slaves to call those who had been invited to the wedding feast, and they were unwilling to come. Again, he sent out other slaves, saying, 'Tell those who have been invited, behold, I have prepared my dinner; my oxen and my fattened livestock are all butchered, and everything is ready; come to the wedding feast.'" "But they paid no attention and went their way, one to his own farm, another to his business, and the rest seized his slaves and mistreated them and killed them. But the king was enraged, and he sent his armies and destroyed those murderers and set their city on fire. Then he said to his slaves, 'The wedding is ready, but those who were invited were not worthy. Go therefore to the main highways, as many as you find there; invite to the wedding feast.'" "Those slaves went out into the streets and gathered together all they found, both evil and good, and the wedding hall was filled with dinner-guests. But when the king came in to look over the dinner-guests, he saw a man there who was not dressed in wedding clothes, and he said to him, 'Friend, how did you come in here without wedding clothes?'" "And the man was speechless. Then the king said to the servants, 'Bind him hand and foot, and throw him into the outer darkness; in that place there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth; for many are called, but few are chosen.'" Once again, I think that parable just kind of summed up everything we've read so far in this book. So, and it's really actually gonna get into the next section. Oh man, wow, this is so good. So, Paul portrays the relationship of Christ and his church in terms of the intimacy of marriage, Ephesians 5:32. We can go there real quick.
You said Ephesians?
Ephesians 5:32. "The mystery is great, but I am speaking with reference to Christ and the church." Let's jump back to 25. "Husbands love your wives, just as Christ also loved the church and gave himself up for her, so that he might sanctify her, having cleansed her by the washing of water with the word, that he might present to himself the church in all her glory, having no spot or wrinkle or any such thing, but that she would be holy and blameless. So husbands also ought to love their own wives as their own bodies; he who loves his own wife loves himself, for no one ever hated his own flesh, but nourishes and cherishes it, just as Christ also does the church, because we are members of his body. For this reason a man shall leave his father and mother, and shall be joined to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh. This mystery is great, but I am speaking with reference to Christ and the church." So in biblical times, a marriage involved two major events, the betrothal and the wedding. These were normally separated by a period of time during which the two individuals were considered husband and wife, and as such, were under the obligation of faithfulness. The wedding began with a procession to the bride's house, which was followed by a return to the house of the groom for the marriage feast. Everybody see where this is going? "By analogy, the church espoused to Christ by faith now awaits the return, when the heavenly groom will come for his bride, return to heaven for the marriage feast that lasts throughout eternity." John is not saying that the eternal festivities have in fact arrived, but is speaking of that period of blessedness which follows the millennium. So the declaration in chapter 14, verse 8, with the actual fall of Babylon in chapters 17 and 18. So going back to 14:8. "So fallen, fallen is Babylon the great, she who has made, who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of her immorality." So then combining that with 17 and 18, with this destruction, you have this purging, and what's leaving is the spotless bride. Okay, chapter 19, verse 8, "It was given to her to clothe herself..."
Can we back up for a second?
Oh sure.
Could you expand on, and his bride has made herself ready?
Sure. So I think what we're getting into here, and that's gonna lead into 8. And what we're talking about are the righteous acts. The bride has made herself ready, so by walking in faith and doing the things that we have been called to do, like, the bride has made herself ready. Yeah, it's not just everybody that's alive at the moment of Jesus's return. This is all the believers throughout time.
In the church.
Right. Yep, absolutely. And a lot of times, you know, you'll have the groom building on another part of the house for he and his bride, at the family house. And when that's done, then a date would be set, and then he would return for his bride, and then the wedding would be celebrated. And so this could be months. I don't know of too many occasions where it was years, but you know.
I'm going to prepare.
Go to prepare a place for you, absolutely. Yep, that's, and see, and these are the things, like, hold on to that, because, like, remember, Jesus is speaking, and he knows. He knows. And so as he is talking through this, and he drops those little hints and nuggets after the fact, as we're talking about this, this marriage of the Lamb, he knows that that was the trajectory for all of these people that he was calling to himself. And he goes, this is the responsibility of the groom, "I am going to prepare a place for you. Where I go, you will be also." That's pretty awesome. Yeah, that's, and that's a blessing, right, for us, as we're reading through this, I mean, not all the apostles read what we have as our whole New Testament. Like, that's kind of crazy to think about. You've read more of the Bible than they have. You could have fun with that one. So, but still, like, it's still, you know, something to think about, that like, how interconnected these themes are throughout Scripture. And they're running through the Old Testament into the New Testament, but now, when we're, you know, when we encounter these themes, we're kind of jumping back, and we're like, oh yeah, we're connecting these dots. Like, that's not, that's not a coincidence, that's not, you know, by chance. It's amazing, like, this is the essence of Bible study, right, to see how interconnected it is, because there's one spirit that is leading the authors in the recording, faithful recording of Scripture. So, definitely something to keep, keep in mind, right? But, as Jim was asking here, "And his bride has made herself ready." So we've talked about the groom going and preparing a place, but the bride has made herself ready. So now we're going to get into basically works of righteousness. And this is not, like, hear me out, we're not talking about somebody earning their salvation, this is the literal fruits of having the indwelling of the Holy Spirit within you. This is the fruit of following Jesus. You cannot separate these things out. To follow Jesus is to commit acts of righteousness. And this is how God works through us to further his kingdom. So this is how the bride has made herself ready, and verse 8, "It was given to her to clothe herself in fine linen, bright and clean; for the fine linen is the righteous acts of the saints." So Mounts writes, "In contrast to the prostitute, who is arrayed in purple and scarlet, adorned with gold, jewels, and pearls, the bride is attired in fine linen, bright and clean." The following clause explains that the fine linen stands for the righteous acts of the saints. "The plural acts may indicate that the bride's garment is woven of the innumerable acts of faithful obedience by those who endure to the end." So Mounts is taking, where these are the ones that, like, we have been reading about, "those who have endured to the end." "This does not deny the Pauline doctrine of justification based on the righteous obedience of Christ, Romans 5:18-19, but suggests that a transformed life is the proper response to the call of the heavenly bridegroom." At issue for John, and for reference, the letters to the seven churches, is holiness within the church. Okay, so, as we're reading through, it's always keeping those letters in mind, that is what is opening this entire prophetic word, this apocalypse, right? And so when things like this come up, and we think about, oh yeah, John was concerned, or as Jesus was dictating this, these letters to these churches, he was concerned about their holiness. Think of Jezebel, right? Think of the Nicolaitans, think of all the things that they were polluting themselves Jesus was concerned for their holiness. And that's what we're talking about, with these righteous acts, we're talking about holiness. So the righteousness to which he refers stands in stark contrast to the unrighteousness of the wicked. Note that what was given to her was not the fine linen, but the privilege of arraying herself in righteous acts. So the NRSV, does anybody happen to have that? They translate this passage, "To her it has been granted to be clothed with fine linen."
What verse?
Verse 8 still. So here it says, "It was given to her to clothe herself in fine linen." So the NRSV is a little bit more, it has. "But the privilege of arraying herself in righteous acts." So to her, it has been granted to be clothed. So it's kind of an interesting little nuance there. Any questions on 8? All right. Verse 9. "Then he said to me, 'Write: blessed are those who were invited to the marriage supper of the Lamb.' And he said to me, 'These are the true words of God.'" So here we encounter the fourth of the seven beatitudes in Revelation. Ah, I don't have a dry erase marker. So, okay, here we go. Chapter 1, verse 3. Chapter 14, verse 13. Chapter 16, verse 15. Here in chapter 19, verse 9. And then the next ones will come in chapter 20, verse 6. Chapter 22, verse 7. And chapter 22, verse 14. So, seven beatitudes. This is number four. "So the speaker is probably the interpreting angel of chapter 17. Although, as the following verse indicates, John apparently mistakes him for the Lord. Elsewhere, he never falls before this angel to worship him." So, could be a different one, we're just trying to piece together some contextual clues, but there might also be a different motive here, we'll get to that. "So John is told to write of the blessedness of those who are called to the wedding supper of the Lamb. So although the feast is nowhere described, we should understand that the time of blessedness it portrays is presented under different symbolism in the last two chapters of the book. This great feast is prefigured in Isaiah, chapter 25, verses 6 through 8, where the Lord prepares on Mount Zion a great banquet, removes the reproach of his people, and swallows up death forever." So let's go to Isaiah 25. All right, Isaiah 25, starting at verse 6. "The Lord of Host, Yahweh Shavuot, will prepare a lavish banquet for all peoples on this mountain, a banquet of aged wine, choice pieces with marrow, marrow, and refined aged wine. And on this mountain he will swallow up the covering which is over all peoples, even the veil which is stretched over all nations. He will swallow up death for all time. And the Lord God will wipe tears away from all faces, and he will remove the reproach of his people from all the earth, for Yahweh has spoken." Actually, I want to read the next one. "And it will be said in that day, behold, this is our God, for whom we have waited, that he might save us. This is Yahweh, for whom we have waited. Let us rejoice and be glad in his salvation." That's a good one. So the concept of a sacred meal shared by Israel and the Messiah is common in Jewish thought, pulling from some of the apocryphal works. According to 3 Enoch, 48:10, this banquet takes place in Jerusalem. The idea is found in apocalyptic settings as well. In Luke, chapter 13, verse 29, Jesus speaks of those from all points of the compass who will come and take their places at the feast in the kingdom of God. So that was Luke, chapter 13, verse 29. "Later in his ministry he foretells a day, when he will drink the fruit of the vine anew with his disciples in the kingdom of his father," Matthew 26, verse 29. "Such promises caused the believer to anticipate with joy the great messianic banquet that will celebrate the long-awaited marriage of the Lamb and his bride, the church. Note that in verses 7 through 9, the church is pictured both as the bride and as the guest who are invited to the wedding. Far from constituting a contradiction, the sort of freedom is a normal characteristic of apocalyptic writing." It also prevents you from being super literal. At the end of the beatitude, the angel says, "These are the true words of God." This authentication should probably not be limited to the beatitude itself, but refer as well to the song of the heavenly multitude, verses 6 through 8. And even to all the angel, all that the angel has explained, beginning with chapter 17. So if it is the same angel that John is interacting with, and he responds with this, it's kind of like, everything that this one angel has interacted with John about. So it's not the same John from the beginning, but from 17 up till now. Thinking, I'm like, you know what, I wonder if everybody, anybody's ever broken this down like episodes? You know, with like, somebody coming in and saying, hey, John, here's, you know, because really, like, the first couple of chapters would be Jesus, you know, write these things. But then you have an angel come, and then there's a different angel, and then he's really just witnessing stuff, and then there's one of the elders, right? I mean, you know, so you can kind of go through, it's almost like little episodes. Okay. We'll wait for the Bible Project to do that.
Make a mini-series out of it.
Write, write a mini-series?
Call it Left Behind.
Oh, okay, we're, okay. Here, let's go there, Ephesians, chapter 2. "For by grace you have been saved through faith, and that not of yourselves, it is the gift of God, not as a result of works, so that no one may boast." not as a result of works, so that no one may boast. For we are his workmanship created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand so that we would walk in them." Yeah, yeah, so once again, it's just things working together here. Good stuff. All right, verse ten. "Then I fell at his feet to worship him, but he said to me, 'Do not do that. I am a fellow servant of yours and your brethren, who hold the testimony of Jesus.'" Worship God. "For the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy." So overwhelmed by the magnificence of the wedding scene and the pronouncement of blessing on those invited to attend, John falls at the feet of the angel in worship. The suggestion that he is acting out a charade. Okay, all right, so here's the next part. Some have suggested that what John is including here is basically angel worship was popular in the earliest church. Like, and it was kind of spreading as its own heresy. And so what John was including here was a little like pointing the finger of, hey, don't do this, this isn't right, this isn't accepted. And you have an angel themselves like saying, hey, do not do it, I'm a servant just like you. So. No, no, no. Basically, so that's, this is what Mounts kind of covers here. The suggestion that he is acting out a charade in order to discourage some tendency towards angel worship that, uh, that may have lingered among the churches of Asia Minor. So Colossians, chapter two, verse eighteen. So, but Mounts actually believes that's improbable. Like that that's not necessarily the case here. Do you have a question?
Well, so then if John's acting out a charade, then he didn't actually do this.
Well, and that's, that's where we're going, that's right. Absolutely, so that's.
Well, that rocks my world.
No, no, I'm not saying that that's the case, I'm just saying. So it's difficult to imagine John waiting for an opportunity to prostrate himself before an angel in order to teach his readers that God alone is worthy of worship. John is brought up sharply with the command, "Do not do it." So one recalls Peter's words to Cornelius, who had fallen at his feet, "Stand up, I am only a man myself," Acts ten, twenty-five. So such an act of worship is inappropriate because the angel is simply a fellow servant with John and his brethren. Since both Christians and angels are servants of the same Lord, it follows that they are fellow servants with one another. And so for reference, Matthew eighteen, twenty-eight through thirty-three, and Hebrews one, seven, and verse fourteen. So the brothers are those who hold to the testimony of Jesus. So actually, let me just kind of bounce back, just to kind of put this to rest. No, John is not acting out a charade, I think he was literally just overcome. Overcome with the magnificence of what was going on, and so he just falls at the angel's feet. And the angel quickly responds, "Do not do it." Now, whether he was actually worshiping him or just kind of humbled by being there in the vicinity. Right, so I mean, like, if somebody falls at somebody's feet, like, not necessarily worshiping them, it might just be like, oh, man, something is going on here that is way beyond me. Like, I mean, John's seeing something that is the hope of believers for thousands of years. Even at John's time, it would, it would have been the hope of his people for a thousand years. How much more so that John got to walk with Messiah for three years, follow Messiah for another sixty years, or fifty plus, and then get to see these things. So, so you know, like you can take the whole, like, oh, man, you know, since Isaiah's time, when Isaiah's talking about this, like, okay, you know, five hundred years, seven hundred years, that's great. But even just for John to have followed Jesus for fifty years, to suffer like he did, to just be faithful as he was, and to see the culmination of all of it, right here in front of him. And he just falls down, just flat, just to worship. So, and the angel takes that opportunity, like, oh, nope, nope, not me. And we don't get John's response here of like, hey, I wasn't worshiping you, I'm just like humbled by all of this. Yeah, okay.
You may have covered this before, but is there any speculation of who this angel was?
So basically, Mounts refers to this angel as the interpreting angel. So makes his appearance in chapter seventeen, and just kind of interprets what John is seeing. And so there's interactions between them, and then he kind of pops up again here. So, and that's what kind of led me to asking, you know, just kind of the different episodes, because there, sometimes these angels are introduced differently. So it's not like the same one from the beginning. There's like a different one, or an elder, or something. What was he actually like seeing at this time? Because, you know, kind of, you just mentioned this, like, if he's witnessing a big feast, and Jesus is sitting at the head of it, like, obviously, he knows the person in front of him is not Jesus. Right, so I mean, you know, that's why I would, I would generally fall back on like John just being one hundred percent completely overwhelmed with what he is seeing. So he's not like, hey, angel, like, let me worship you, you know? That's not it at all. Like, I mean, these are big things that he's talking about. This is the marriage of the Lamb, the marriage supper, right? So, I mean, this is kind of ingrained, this is written into John's hope. Like, we talk, like, what is our hope? Right, like, that's the things that we're talking about here. That's what, that's the nature of this chapter, that evil will be judged and dealt with. That this life is not it, this is not everything, that we are looking forward to the marriage supper of the Lamb. We as Lamb followers, and by calling ourselves that, and by accepting the role that we have in following Jesus, and to commit those righteous acts, the things that God has set up, set us up to do. We just got to be faithful and obedient to do them. So in all of this, like, that is our hope. Every good thing, everything that you have suffered for following Jesus, everything that you've missed out on, every righteous act that you've committed, is remembered, is recalled, is stitched into the fabric of the linen of the bride of Christ. Everything you do for the rest of your life will be remembered and recalled for eternity, for the glory of God. Like, that's, that's our hope. So every bit of suffering that you do for doing good, that you receive for doing good, like, it will all be recalled and remembered, it's not for nothing. Actually, this should probably like give you an extra urge to try to keep those things secret. And not put them on Facebook or social media in general. Hey, this is me giving money to the poor, or you know, whatever else. Just the opposite, keep it a secret, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that like as far as like the righteous acts, right? Like, that's what we're talking about here. So, yep, so, so I think John's just overwhelmed. I think he's one hundred percent overwhelmed, yeah. Sure, so let me read Colossians two, eighteen. "Let no one keep defrauding you of your prize by delighting in self-abasement and the worship of the angels. Taking his stand on visions, he is seen inflated without cause by his fleshly mind, and not holding fast to the head, from whom the entire body, being supplied and held together by the joints and ligaments, grows with a growth which is from God." Man.
Was that in Deuteronomy?
Uh, Colossians two, eighteen. And nineteen. So. Yeah, Hebrews one, fourteen. Hebrews one, fourteen. Yep. "But to which of the angels has he ever said, 'Sit at my right hand until I make your enemies a footstool for your feet? Are they not all ministering spirits sent out to render service for the sake of those who will inherit salvation?"
So why are angels below us? Is that, that's why I interpreted Apocrypha.
Yeah, I think in this verse, like what we have are fellow servants, right? And so that is even how the angel identifies himself. "I am a fellow servant of yours and your brethren, who hold the testimony of Jesus, worship God." So.
So they're equal or fellow, or are they?
Sure. No, I mean, we can, you know, whether they are, we serve one another.
Right.
And so, did you have another address on that? Hey, the point is, do not worship angels. Don't do it. Now, remember, Colossae was really just about twenty miles away from Ephesus. And so John was in Ephesus. And so even as Paul is writing this to the Colossian church from Rome, so he had already gotten a report of what was going on there. And so John is including this as well. It's kind of funny how it all lines up. So, let's see, where were we? Well, actually, let me finish up ten right here, real quick. Yeah, you tried, it was good, good effort. "The brothers are those who hold the testimony of Jesus, as in the three previous occurrences of this phrase. The testimony of Jesus is the witness that was born by Jesus. By his life and death, Jesus has demonstrated to his followers what it means to bear a faithful witness to the message revealed by God." So the last clause of the verse, "For the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy", has been variously interpreted. The testimony of Jesus is often taken as an objective genitive. In this case, the clause would mean that the testimony about Jesus is the common substance of all prophecy. Or that the true spirit of prophecy always manifests itself in bearing witness to Jesus. It is better, however, to retain the subjective genitive, as earlier in the same verse, and interpret the saying accordingly. It could mean that the witness or testimony that Jesus bore is the essence of prophetic proclamation. The principle that dominates prophecy.
That's pretty much the same thing, though.
It's a little bit different. So basically, it's a difference between like all prophecies pointing to Jesus, and everything that Jesus said and did, like, was prophetic in its own right. It's like, is it pointing to Jesus, or is Jesus pointing to all of these things?
What is your opinion?
Wow, thanks, thanks for asking, Jim.
Could it be both?
So who hold the testimony of Jesus, worship God, "For the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy." So I think the whole idea is that when we hold to the testimony of Jesus, right? His example, his witness, right? It becomes a prophetic call for our life. Like, that's a whole, I mean, how many times have I already talked about it in this hour, of following Jesus? Living as he lived, and you know, when we're doing this, right, we even start to sound like him. So it kind of, huh, kind of becomes its own self-fulfilling prophecy. I mean, because that's, that's our goal, is to follow Jesus that much more closely. So whether it's pointing to him, or he's pointing to it, us following him and obeying his words, it kind of builds on itself, doesn't it? So, there was actually one more note left for verse ten. And Brenda caught it, so, from her own study Bible. So, so Mounts goes on, "However, John's readers would certainly understand his reference to the spirit of prophecy in terms of the Holy Spirit as the one who inspired all prophecy." "Peter spoke of the spirit of Christ, who moved in the Old Testament prophets to predict the sufferings of Christ and the glories that would follow." So let's go to first Peter, chapter one. Go left, there you go. Not very far. Thanks, David. I appreciate that. First Peter, chapter one. Verse ten and eleven. "As to this salvation, the prophets who prophesied of the grace that would come to you made careful searches and inquiries, seeking to know what person or time the spirit of Christ within them was indicating, as he predicted the sufferings of Christ and the glories to follow." They knew that there would be a figure, but they didn't know who exactly it was. Yeah. I mean, even some of Jesus's own contemporaries, I mean, the disciples, like, could he be the one? So, because they were seeing a lot of stuff happening, right? So, "And that prophecy came as the result of men speaking from God as they were being carried along by the Holy Spirit." So second Peter, chapter one. Verse twenty-one. "For no prophecy was ever made by an act of human will, but men moved by the Holy Spirit spoke from God." So for this reason, people are to worship God, the giver of revelation, and not the angel, who is merely the interpreter of visions. This approach makes it unnecessary to consider the explanatory sentence as a gloss added by someone who had chapter twenty-two, verse eight, in mind. So, twenty-two, eight. "I, John, am the one who heard and saw these things, and when I heard and saw, I fell down to worship at the feet of the angel who showed me these things. But he said to me, 'Do not do that. I am a fellow servant of yours and of your brethren, the prophets, and of those who heed the words of this book.'" Worship God. So, the spirit, the Holy Spirit, the spirit of prophecy. So which, everybody remember, that when Jesus was baptized, we see the spirit descending upon him. Right? In the form of a dove. All right, are we ready to move on to? All right, are we ready to move on to verse 11? The coming of Christ? Yeah.
Are you going to come back to my question?
Come back to your question?
Comment before break.
Oh, yeah, Antichrist, or, sorry, not Antichrist, false, uh, false prophets. 11 through 16. "The warrior Messiah appears." Oh, man, getting into the good stuff, the really good stuff. "And I saw heaven opened, and behold, a white horse; and he who sat on it is called Faithful and True; and in righteousness he judges and wages war. His eyes are aflame of fire, and on his head are many diadems; and he has a name written on him, which no one knows except himself. He is clothed with a robe dipped in blood, and his name is called the Word of God. And the armies, which are in heaven, clothed in fine linen, white and clean, were following him on white horses. From his mouth comes a sharp sword, so that with it he may strike down the nations; and he will rule them with a rod of iron; and he treads the winepress of the fierce wrath of God the Almighty. And on his robe and on his thigh he has a name written, King of Kings and Lord of Lords." So by now, the reader will be accustomed to sudden and dramatic changes as vision after vision appears to John. "The blessedness of the wedding supper of the Lamb is abruptly followed by a vision of the warrior Messiah, who appears on a white horse, ready to wage war. His blazing eyes reflect his eagerness to carry out his mission; his robe dipped in blood symbolizes his coming victory. Accompanying the one whose name is the Word of God are the armies of heaven, dressed in fine linen, white and clear, white and clean. And it is with sharp sword that protrudes from his mouth that he slays the nations. He treads the winepress of the fury of the wrath of God, for he is the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. Nowhere in Revelation is the victorious Christ portrayed in symbols and language more likely to convince the reader that in spite of Satan's best efforts, God and the Lamb will emerge triumphant in the end. The language of apocalyptic is sufficiently flexible to allow the destruction of the great city in chapter 18 to be followed by a final battle in chapter 19. Chronology must never be allowed to determine how truth can best be expressed." I thought that was a really good line from Mounts. "Chronology must never be allowed to determine how truth can best be expressed." So, we've already read that Jesus has won three times already. I don't know about you, but I'm not getting tired of hearing it. And we get more details every time we go through it, right? And that's the thing, even with the destruction, and even with the judgments, we're getting more detail. So it's kind of like, you know, going down this slide, and we're just kind of seeing more and more as we're getting closer to the ground. So, so almost without warning, so verse 11. "And I saw heaven open, and behold, a white horse; and he who sat on it is called Faithful and True; and in righteousness he judges and wages war." So almost without warning, heaven opens. "There appears a white horse, whose rider is to wage a holy war and bring to a close the present age. The imagery used to depict this great event reflects the Jewish tradition of a warrior Messiah more than the New Testament teaching of the second advent of Christ. Among the Hebrew prophets, it was Yahweh himself who would come forth in the last days to establish his kingdom over rival nations." So this is the Messiah, son of David. "As the figure of the Messiah became more distinct in Jewish expectation, it is he who emerged as the great defender of God's cause in the final conflict." And there's actually various mentions of this in other, like, apocryphal works. But when we get to the New Testament, in 2 Thessalonians, chapter 1, verses 7 and 8, Paul teaches that the Lord Jesus will be revealed from heaven in flaming fire to inflict vengeance upon the wicked. So 2 Thessalonians, chapter 1, verses 7 and 8. In Matthew, chapter 25, verse 41, Jesus commands the cursed to depart into eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels. So whatever difference of emphasis may exist between the appearance of a warring Messiah and the return of Christ, as generally depicted in the New Testament, can be accounted for on the basis of two complementary, not antithetical, they're not opposites here, but complementary themes. Messianic judgment upon the wicked and the fulfillment and vindication of the Christian hope. Everybody's looking for Jesus's return. Not everybody knows what that's all about. So, messianic judgment upon the wicked and fulfillment and vindication of the Christian hope. Both themes are found in 2 Thessalonians, chapter 1, verses 9 through 10, where Paul speaks of Christ inflicting vengeance upon the wicked at his return, as well as being glorified in those who believe. After noting that the idea of Christ pictured as a warrior going forth to battle comes perilously near to being irreconcilable with the Christian concept of God, Dr. Schlotter goes on to say that the metaphor is then transformed from one battle, from one of battle into one of judgment. "God triumphantly clears the battlefield and swallows up his enemies in death." So let's go ahead and go to 2 Thessalonians, chapter 1. Just to read for reference here. 2 Thessalonians, chapter 1. The main verses and views, verses 9 and 10. And we're going to jump back to 5, because, because this is good stuff. Hmm, no, I think we're going to start at 3.
You're sure?
I'm sure, I'm sure. I just don't know when we're going to stop, but. All right, 2 Thessalonians, starting at verse 3 of chapter 1. "We are always to give thanks to God for you, brethren, as is only fitting, because your faith is greatly enlarged, and the love of each one of you toward one another grows ever greater. Therefore we ourselves speak proudly of you among the churches of God for your perseverance and faith in the midst of all your persecutions and afflictions which you endure. This is a plain indication of God's righteous judgment, so that you will be considered worthy of the kingdom of God, for which indeed you are suffering. For after all, it is only just for you, for, it is only just for God to repay with affliction those who afflict you, and to give relief to you who are afflicted, and to us as well, when the Lord Jesus will be revealed from heaven with his mighty angels in flaming fire, dealing out retribution to those who do not know God and to those who do not obey the gospel of our Lord Jesus. These will pay the penalty of eternal destruction, away from the presence of the Lord and from the glory of his power, when he comes to be glorified in his saints on that day, and to be marveled at, at among all who have believed, for our testimony to you was believed. To this end also we pray for you always, that our God will count you worthy of your calling and fulfill every desire for goodness and the work of faith with power, so that the name of our Lord Jesus, our Lord Jesus, will be glorified in you and you in him, according to the grace of our God and the Lord Jesus Christ." Man. Wow. Man, you just kind of want to go back and just reread the whole New Testament now that we're like going through Revelation, right? Just be like, hey, wait a second. I mean, you know, like Paul definitely had a vision in mind, right? Like, he knew what he was seeing and how he was encouraging these people. Like, this is not different than what we're reading here, right? So. In chapter 4, verse 1, "A door stood open into heaven; later the heavenly sanctuary itself was opened for further revelations. Now the heavens themselves stand open, to reveal the conquering Messiah and his armies returning from heaven to war against the beast, the false prophet, and the nations of the world who flock after them. Like the first of the four horsemen of chapter 6, the rider is mounted upon a white horse, a symbol of victorious conquest." So let me be clear. Do not confuse what we're reading here with the rider of the white horse in chapter 6. I just want to throw that one out there. This one that we're reading about in chapter 19 is called Faithful and True. "And with justice he judges and makes war." The righteousness of divine judgment is a prominent theme throughout Revelation. In chapter 16, verses 5 through 7, "The angel in charge of the waters proclaimed, 'You are just in these judgments.' And the altar responded, 'Yes, God Almighty, true and just are your judgments.'" The Great Multitude in chapter 19, verse 2. "Praise God, for true and just are his judgments." There's no doubt in John's mind that the righteous retribution about to be enacted upon the beast and his followers is perfectly compatible with truth and justice. "Centuries before, the psalmist had sung of the coming of the Lord, when he would judge the world with righteousness and the peoples in his truth." Psalm 96, verse 13. Let's go to Psalm 96. Are we going to read the whole thing? Yeah, yeah, we are. Psalm 96.
You asked yourself questions?
No. I was just, yeah, I was just reading everybody's minds. So Psalm 96, "Sing to Yahweh a new song; sing to Yahweh all the earth; sing to Yahweh, bless his name; proclaim good tidings of his salvation from day to day; tell of his glory among the nations, his wonderful deeds among all the peoples. For great is Yahweh, and greatly to be praised, he is to be feared above all gods; for all the gods of the peoples are idols. But Yahweh made the heavens; splendor and majesty are before him; strength and beauty are in his sanctuary. Ascribe to Yahweh, O families of the peoples; ascribe to Yahweh glory and strength; ascribe to Yahweh the glory of his name; bring an offering and come into his courts. Worship Yahweh in holy attire; tremble before him all the earth; say among the nations, Yahweh reigns. Indeed, the world is firmly established; it will not be moved; he will judge the peoples with equity. Let the heavens be glad, and let the earth rejoice; let the sea roar and all it contains; let the field exalt and all that is in it; then all the trees of the forest will sing for joy before Yahweh, for he is coming; for he is coming to judge the earth. He will judge the world in righteousness and the peoples in his faithfulness." And what does the name of Jesus mean? What does Jesus mean in Hebrew or even Aramaic? Yah, Yahweh saves. I just want to point that out, because anytime we're reading about Yahweh coming in righteousness, it's like, they're not wrong. He is the name bearer. He is the one that bears Yahweh's name. Like, he is the, the only extension, the physical extension of Yahweh himself to bear that name and to carry out the cause of Yahweh. I just don't see a problem with it.
But he is Yahweh, isn't he?
We're not going to get into that.
Isn't that what we're talking?
Jim, be good. Be good.
You passed along the message. You got 20 minutes.
All right, what Jim is asking for here is a little Trinitarian clarification. So.
To be clear.
We're, we're, we're not. It's only going to take 30 seconds. So.
We'll see. We'll see.
Trying to think where to go with this. So. So it is important to understand when we get into Revelation. Oh, man. Yeah, I know. That's right. That's right. So the Trinity. Because I want to, I want to encourage good theology. And not just like, I don't know, just sloppy, sloppy theology and just stuff that we pass on just because that's what we say or whatever. Like, when we get into Revelation, like, we see the Spirit, we see Yahweh on his throne, and we see Jesus. And nobody's messing up names and titles. So I, I think that's, that's important. It's important that we get it right. Who's doing what? And I, and I, and you know, to that point, like, because when we do that, we understand how significant it is that like, that Jesus is the only person in all of the created universe that can do the things that we're reading about. He is the only one that can bear the name Yahweh. And to be sent on mission to do the conquering. And for us to read from the Old Testament prophets and be like, Yahweh conquers, Yahweh judges, Yahweh, whatever, and really, actually with that one, it's Yahweh's judgment, and he has sent his son to exact that judgment, to enact it, to conquer. And he's the only one that can do that with the seal of approval. Seal judgments. That was a Revelation pun. Come on, there was a setup and everything. I know, he did. I saw, I saw some other nods there, a couple grins, like, did he? Okay, so really, like, like, it's important for us to have, like, I don't want a cleaner Trinitarian theology. It's important. Like, Yahweh deserves that. And for us to just not like confuse those things. I mean, when the Spirit's doing something, we need to give him credit. And he's doing this on behalf of the Father. Right? And so when we see Jesus, the Son of Yahweh, walking the earth, right? And he's talking about his relationship to the Father. We're not thinking like, oh, he's, he's a little bit confused because he's really just talking to himself. That's not the case at all. When he's praying, he's not just talking to himself. He's not just doing this as a charade for everyone watching. He has absolutely got this direct line with the Father. And he knows that the Father is hearing. And that's the beautiful part of when he's going to like, and Lazarus is dead and stinking in a tomb. No, Lord, he stinketh, right? And so. But you know, he calls this out and he's like, Father, I know you've always heard me. Cause in that moment, death is getting a black eye. Cause he is calling him out. And he's, he's calling upon the Father, right? In that moment. Cause we're going, we're going deep for this one. Everybody else, you know, the lame walk and things like that, doesn't even really like pray over him. But on some of these occasions, we're seeing him like, going to the Father. So it's important for us to understand, just to have that kind of like, yes, we can talk about the Trinity, and especially if we just don't even know who to give credit to, right? It's like, you're in the ballpark and it's a good ballpark. It's the right one. But then there's some parts of this where we just need to get that right. Because, because it's what the text says. And to stick to that and not to just gloss over and blur those lines. Does that make sense? So, might be a little nitpicky, it might be a little, you know, whatever. I just, I don't know. It's, I think it comes from an appreciation and a respect for like, how Yahweh has structured this? How these things have happened and taken place? We see distinction between the Son and the Father, right? And when he says the eye and the father are one, he's talking about like, not this like magic melding that happens when he gets back to heaven. That we never see that. We see two distinct persons. But they are absolutely 100% in sync with what they want with judgment, with, I mean, just everything. Where we have seen angels rebel, there is not even the faintest chance that the Son would ever rebel against the Father. They are so one. So.
So back, I mean, I'll look this up. 1 John 5:7-8. Can you just read that real quick?
Where? I thought you were just gonna rattle it off. You're like, could you read that real quick? Hey, and mind you, that was only five minutes.
"There are three in heaven that cast by the Father the word and the Holy Spirit, and these three are one." So what are they saying when they say these three are one?
Their testimony is all like the same.
So Jesus was not, Jesus is or is not God then?
Chapter 5, verse 7? Well, mine says, "These three are in agreement."
Oh, there you go. Yeah. So it says in agreement. So.
King James says.
Yeah. So when we say, alright. When we, when we say God, like God is, makes you feel proud. Alright. So when we say God, like, we say it within our culture, like with a capital G, we make it super special because it's referring to Yahweh. But like, all of a sudden you lowercase that G and it goes to like, anything that you worship or gods of other cultures or whatever else. So what we're talking about is divinity. So like, yes, are they God? Yeah. Holy Spirit of who? Spirit of God. Jesus is the. Son of God.
But he's not God.
So that is why, like. No, 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 it's fine. It's fine. He is God. We'll just go from there. Yep. Because that's the idea and that's why like within that thought process, we land with the Trinity. Because like, oh yeah, they're all God and you know, we have the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And so.
Is he God? Or it'd be more correct to say he is of God?
No, he is God.
You're not just saying that to shut down the conversation?
No, I'm not. I'm not. It's just less, it's just less clean. Because like what we see clear distinction, but yet like, we're approaching this from a Western idea where we want to like see all these things delineated. And it's just not that way. But we can say that Jesus is God and be like, okay. Because everything I just said before, he is the only one in the entire universe that can bear the name Yahweh.
Maybe you should tell him about the steam and the ice and the water.
There you go. Have you ever heard that? This, so water being liquid, water being steam, and the water being ice. And so it's just taken on three different forms. But it's the same essence. And so, and that word, like with the essence, that goes back to like the Council of Nysia where, you know, I'm trying to think, it's the Latin term or the Greek term, homoseis, where basically they are all of the same essence. And so it's from that you get the Trinitarian statement. So. So yeah. Does that answer it?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. There you go. What a night of rabbit trails. What?
Has Jim number one reached his limited questions for tonight?
Maybe. We got 10 minutes. We'll see though. Do you have a question? Did you? Okay.
No, like I said, the diagram you referenced earlier, I've seen Father, Son, Holy Spirit, and God, or God in middle.
Yeah. And, and, but like, that's the thing is as we're reading this, like, don't confuse who's doing what. It's just not necessary and it, that's, that's just sloppy. So it doesn't say the Trinity was on a white horse. And you can't just give everybody a pass if they do say that. Like, no, wait a second. Jesus is on that horse. So. We made it. Yeah. No, absolutely. Well, and even just like a lot of the stories of like king and you know, the king's son or the landowner's son or different thing like that, like, I mean, maybe we have that if you know, there's a, you know, CEO and the CEO's son just got made VP and he walks into your, you know, section and just says, "We need to change all this." "Yes, sir?" Like, you know what? I don't know if that even compares, but like, if you were living in a country with a king and the prince shows up, you're doing whatever you're told. Because, and it's not because the prince himself has, is like deserving of all this authority. He's bearing the Father's authority, the king's authority. Like it is with that. It was an early heresy of modalism where God took different modes. So when Jesus was here on earth, that was God took on that mode, right? And so heaven was empty. Right? No. Yeah, that's wrong. Absolutely. And so then when Jesus ascended back to heaven, guess what comes down? The Holy Spirit. Forget the fact that the Holy Spirit had already made, made numerous appearances throughout the Gospels way before Acts and we have Pentecost. But yet, those who follow in the modalistic track believe that the Spirit was the mode that God chose in the, in that age from Acts forward. So. Modalism. There you go. Early Christian heresy that somehow still comes around. But. So. Have a much more nuanced view of the Trinity to fight no modalism. So there you go. Alright. You guys are still thinking about, wait, like, hey, wait a second, you know, God is in control and you know, being on the wrong side of that, right? Sweet dreams. Five minutes left. Alright. So. Went camping this weekend, running a little short of sleep, but that's okay. I'll, I'll have a better filter next week. So. This is more, more enjoyable. Alrighty. So if faithful and true is understood as a title, it is the first of four ascribed to Christ in the immediate paragraph. So he also has a secret name, verse 12. He's also called the Word of God. And on his garment displays the title, "King of kings and lord of lords." So faithful and true, secret name, word of God, and king of kings and lord of lords. In chapter 3, verse 4, do you have a question? Alright. In chapter 3, verse 14, Christ was called the faithful and true witness. So the two words are practically synonymous in that the Hebrew idea of truth was reliability rather than correspondence to reality, as in the Greek thought. So the idea of truth was reliability rather than correspondence to reality, as in the Greek thought. God is faithful to his promises and will in due time vindicate the faith of all who place their confidence in him. So faithful and true, he is reliable. Alright. We will pick up with verse 12 next week. And we will also talk about false prophets. I can't remember if we have, if I've talked about that at all before. Maybe that was, maybe that was back in Deuteronomy.